Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission, and this is July 31st of 2025. Let's begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just problem.
Okay, again, welcome, everyone. You all set, Norm?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Approval of the agenda is the first item. Take it away, Dana.
I move to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, I would like to now make a correction to the agenda. And that correction would be that instead of the, under the approval of minutes, there we go. Instead of May 8th, those should be the minutes for May 29th, along with June 19th and July 10th.
You okay with that, Norm?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Any other changes to the agenda? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And a second is?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is set as amended. Uh, is there any public here? Oh, Howard, is that you?
Howard just asked if we had audio. And so I think he's.
Mary Beth heard you guys.
Can you not hear us, Howard? I guess not.
Hmm. What do we got?
We can hear you, Howard. Is there any public here to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move down to, um, the first item tonight, which is the Pocket Park and Phase One activities for the park. And we've got the Chair of the Select Board here and the Recreation Director, Mike Rowe. Um, what we've discussed as a group here for Phase One includes the following activities. Uh, clearing brush, thinning trees, and removing dead ones, removing invasive plants and replacing with native species, expanding the parking lot. Howard, um, we can hear you if you can just mute yourself.
Uh, expand.
Send them a text.
Yeah, it's all we can hear.
Expanding the parking lot in Simon's Avenue, adding safety alert signs for flooding and combined sewer overflows, and removing or covering obsolete pipe ends and wi- wiring.
Am I the only ones that is not being heard? Period? Question mark. Also, I can't hear anybody.
Should we, uh, Bill, can you ask him to just reboot? See if that helps? And so what we've also done is, um, through the circle, we've asked for volunteers and we've been getting a few. Yeah. So, our guest of honor for this.
Wait a second.
Mike, you want to come up so the folks online can see us?
Okay, I'm good now.
Very strange. Yeah, I'll be fine. Okay. Okay, hi, folks. Um, so first of all, thank you for moving us along on this. As you know, we now own the property because Green Mountain Power deeded the Pocket Park area to us. They reserve some easements, but nothing that should interfere with some of the plans that we want to do. Um, the, you know, from my point of view, I'd like to start getting the area cleared, cleaned up, getting the invasives out, as you mentioned. I'd also like to start a little bit. And once we get in there, we can tell more what's going to be needed, like the pathway down to the kayak put-in area and then eventually something over so fishers can get down to the pool beneath the falls. Um, but I'd really also like to see if we can start um, working on the handicapped accessible area, which will follow the old path to where the bridge used to be and then having uh, fencing, so of course, nobody goes over it. Um, so if that is something to, we can ask the highway crew to work with you folks. Um, and I love the idea of volunteers. I think we've got some master gardeners that I can ask to go in and do some identification of invasives and probably, I'll see some of them tomorrow because we've got a project going tomorrow. So we should be able to start helping out there and it'd be nice to schedule a work session in August or in September. Um, and let us know, we can put the word out and we can get some folks in to start um, clearing it. But thank you for picking up on this and moving forward, and I'm very grateful.
Mike, I'm curious, what do you see, what do you see as your role? With this rollout?
This is, this is gonna be Mike's eventually. He's now our, uh, Rec Director because he's retired from Rutland Town School. So he's, he's now going to be running our parks in the town. So we wanted him involved. Um, but there, I've spoken for you. Go right ahead.
No, that's a okay. So whatever the park recreation has uh, would also fall under my purview. So whatever I can provide to that, um, to the project is why I'm here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it would be great if you could organize this work. You know, where volunteers.
As in get a, set a work date, work session. I'll work with you on getting some volunteers in with Barbara's list. Yeah.
Okay, so I guess the first step would, like you had said, is to have people come in and say what we can cut and what we shouldn't cut.
Yes.
That would be the first step before we even have a workday. Because if we just go in there and cut, cut, cut.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know, you know, a weed from a plant.
I'm okay with that.
I'm not, or a good tree or a bad tree.
Our tree warden would be a good resource for that.
Our tree warden, yeah, our tree warden could definitely help out. He's on the highway department, so.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, so I can, um, I can help plan the, uh, the starting day for doing that. Um, and then I guess more guidance because I, like I said, I'm new to this part. I mean, I like the fact of the park and putting in someplace where you can load a canoe or a kayak and then go down the river. I was thinking, because I was driving by it the other day. And I thought, yeah, that'd be great. I can put my kayak in, but where can I put my kayak out? And so there should be some communication, I think, between whoever, whatever board it is and Proctor to maybe communicate about, okay, we're trying to do this and you can put in here, but it's going to require your town to maybe figure out a place where people can pull out or put in and go up, whatever. I mean, I don't think the river is like 100 mile an hour current if you want to go both ways, but that would be a conversation for some board to have with Proctor to talk about that, because I know if you go too far, you're gonna end up in Amius Water Pipe and that wouldn't really be good. Um, so I think that's also a conversation that needs to be had if it hasn't already happened already. If we're encouraging people to use that river, which I think is a wonderful idea. But there needs to be another, uh, part where you come out. And that's Proctor.
Well, we haven't done anything on that because I think most of our group uh, thinks it may be too dangerous or too much liability for the town to use, to use, uh, the park as a launch.
Well, can, can I speak to that? Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Okay, um, I, and I understand the concern. First of all, it's being used for that very purpose now. Um, uh, secondly, other towns have waterfront parks, they have waterfront facilities, they have boat launches, they have, we have swimming pool in Rutland Town. Um, we, as a town, as a municipality under state law, we have um, immunity from prosecution unless we have coverage under our insurance policy. And the League of Cities and Towns does provide coverage for things like the pool and, and other um, facilities that we have. So I don't think this should grind to a halt because there's some concern about liability. We can get a little more information. We can check with the league and see what policy rider we can put on this, but I don't think that should be a showstopper. Um, but it's municipalities all over the state have these amenities and we shouldn't be afraid to, to pursue the idea of something that's already been you, being used as a kayak put in place anyway. So, my two cents. What else can we, what can we do to make you feel more comfortable about this? Let me put it that way.
I mean, my, my question in hearing that is I fully agree with Mary. Um, so the concept of the Pocket Park is to pull in, get out of your car, go to the edge, look at the fall, uh, look at the, the river and then turn around? Or if you want to go fishing, then we're gonna put a fishing spot, we can go fish.
There's like 20, like 20 some odd features that we were planning for.
Okay.
The, all of the phases and a picnic table up there would be one.
Right, right.
And then, and then a trail, hopefully. Um, yeah, and then, then use of the overlook.
Okay, I, I mean, I just wanted to understand the concept of, yes, if it, it's just like, uh, you know, you go and you just hang and look at, which is awesome. It's a place to park and to socialize and to relax. Um, but at the same time, it can be used for recreation as far as boating, um, which I would, I would, you know, like to see.
Yep. Uh, Mary, I was puzzled by one of your comments uh, when you alluded to prosecution.
Mm-hmm.
I, it's the first time it's come up. I'm not sure what you were alluding to. I don't understand.
It's the old common law. Um, immunity from, from liability. Unless, unless there is a policy in place, insurance policy, and we have that through the League of Cities and Towns. Sovereign immunity.
Well, I don't see any potential for criminal. You, you were talking about.
Not criminal.
Oh, civil, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'm sure there's insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a, we have a blanket policy covering a lot of stuff here in town. The police department, fire, you know, the rec department. Um, so we're, our, our parks.
Well, we certainly can. You have plenty of good counsel. Uh, we certainly could ask for, you know, a rider to an insurance policy to specifically mention that if, if, or some letter to saying what you're doing in the Pocket Park is covered.
Yep.
Uh, one or the other.
Oh, I'll have our town administrator get right on that after he returns from vacation.
Andy.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I spoke out against having the, the kayak launch there. Uh, I kayaked an awful lot myself. And the reason I spoke out is because I felt that the average kayaker really could not come back against that current if it was heavy. And they would be stranded downstream uh, with potentially no way to get out. Now, I think if we could possibly set up something with the town of Proctor or have an exit place, a good safe place where a kayaker that was not experienced and got caught into a heavy current and could not make it back can positively be able to pull over and, and tie up and get themselves safely out, then that, that would take my objection away.
Okay.
Howard? Just second, just second, Mary Beth, Howard?
Yes, uh, I'm not a kayaker, but I've heard from several people who are kayakers and who have really expressed the, this is being a very dangerous spot to put a kayak in because of the rapids that are going down there, that, that to, to get into your kayak with rough water like that could be very dangerous. And, you know, to encourage people, kids and whatnot, to go down there and and hop in, that there could be something tragic. And like I said, I'm not a kayaker, but I've heard it from several different people who said that's not the best work.
It's not ours. Yeah, I think, um, the distinction you're trying to make, Howard, is us encouraging the use of that as a boat launch?
Well, not necessarily encouraging it, but just making it as, as a boat launch, that's, that kind of, yeah, that sort of encourages people to say, hey, there's a boat, boat launch, let's go. But no, but if somebody, if something tragic were to happen there, it would not be good. And I've, and I've, they said, I've heard from several different people that said that is not a place to put a kayak in. So, but I don't know. I'm not a kayaker. But it could be looked into further, I'm sure, to talk to other people who, Andy, you're a kayaker.
Yes. Again, my.
I was, I was there a few years ago when the Boy Scout troop put in. Um, I think Fern was there.
She might have been here.
Yeah.
I wasn't.
Yeah, um, and, you know, I mean, there's a certain amount of common sense. If the river is running high and creating those rapids, then you shouldn't be kayak-ing on it. And if we have to put up a sign reminding people of that, we can do that, but to just say, no, we shouldn't because it's too dangerous. I mean, the, the day we were watch, I think Barbara was there too.
They were.
The day we were watching the put-in, it was a pretty calm day there.
They were pretty experienced kayakers.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Mary Beth, we jumped over you.
Oh, sure. Uh, so back in 2022, I think it was, when we were doing outreach with a historical group, uh, one of the people with the Crown Point Group, uh, Dale Christie lives in Proctor and he's very involved with trails and he's on their planning commission. And I think he was also involved with trying to get, uh, put out, put in in, um, Proctor. So if you want, I can reach out to him and see um, if you know, it's kind of the history there and what the town of Proctor might, um, feel about, about that piece of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dale is still on the planning commission, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I'll read that to him.
Good.
Okay, well, I think we have a few things to.
There are some things we can work on before we even get to the whole kayak launch area, so.
Right.
Let's move ahead on those things we agree on.
And should we, we've been, the, the solicitation for volunteers, you know, in the circle and other places, has been going to Bill. Should we shift that over to you, Mike?
That's up to you. I mean, I don't care. That's fine.
Seems to make sense.
Yeah, I mean, if he can send, you can send all stuff over to me. Um, and then I can go from there, but I, I'm not going to go any further until I hear back from what's being cut and where's being cut. So once I know what is being done or what can be done, then I will set up a day or days and get the highway and get that taken care of. Once it's clear what needs to be removed, um, so that we just don't go in there willy-nilly and just start, okay, we're just gonna take all this stuff. So as soon as we have a direction of what is to stay and what is to go, then I will set up a couple of workdays and promote that however you see fit. And yes, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with that at all, but I do want to know because you're talking about a clearing stuff. Well, I, I'm not a clearing, I can clear. You won't like it and I can clear it. Um, so just, I need that, whoever's gonna take on that lead as far as what's what, so. And then I'll go from there.
So have we determined who's taking that lead?
Um, I'll talk to the master gardeners because they're good about invasive identification and see if they can do some work. And I, I guess I can also talk with our tree warden and see if we can set up a time to go in and just maybe.
Yeah, I'll join you. Yeah, it's not a problem at all.
Okay.
Nope, you keep me in the full loop, it's fine.
Okay.
I just need a direction rather than just say, oh, go do it.
Yep, gotcha.
Because you probably won't like what ends up happening if you don't give me any kind of a direction. So that needs to come first.
And obviously Dave Sears is willing to help out.
And it looks like we have to repair the guardrail that's at the end of Simon's Avenue because that's been damaged.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And got my list. I came to ask you to do stuff and then end up with a whole list myself, but that's fine.
We didn't let you know?
Nope, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
No.
On the Pocket Park? Okay.
Okay.
Let's, I'll stay.
My marching orders.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm gonna stay for the subdivision.
Okay.
I'm gonna go.
Of the subdivision ordinance discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Mike. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Wilk Dutil subdivisions. Um, North Grove Street, McKinley Avenue. Uh, this is something that we took action in March, on March 7th of 2024 for this. So fill us in on why we're revisiting this.
I'm up here like, Eric, if you want to pass surveys around.
And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Yeah. I'm Eric Dutil.
And I'm Shane Protavansky. I'm an attorney at Facey Awesome Mcfee. Um, so Eric has.
Makes copies of all the plaques.
Yeah, so you gotta follow along.
But easy visual aids.
Um, the plaques that we've already approved?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, um, does anyone need the visual aids?
I probably do.
Okay.
I'll take one too.
We've got three members up there online, so if we could verbally describe things as well as possible.
Do that, and it just, sometimes it's easier if you can see it right.
Thank you.
Yep. That's all, I hand it to you upside down. All right.
Yep. Do you have one?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so, um, like you said, March 7th, 2024, you all issued a subdivision decision letter for Eric Dutil uh, and Steve Wilk. Uh, and you see on that, uh, flat in front of you, there's a parcel between North Grove and McKinley. Uh, has parcel A, which is 24.9 acres. Uh, parcel B, which is 20.5. Uh, to the left there, it says other lands. Uh, that's 10.4 acres. Um, there's a parcel above North Grove, uh, 51.8 acres and a parcel below McKinley there, which is 19 acres.
Where is that?
So you see, it's under parcel B. Parcel B and the other lands of Steve Wilk and Eric Dutil separated by McKinley. Yep.
On the other side of McKinley, okay.
So there's a couple of changes on the subdivision letter that need to be made, a couple corrections. Um, so first, uh, it says a milar must show the size of all four parcels. There's only three parcels in that subdivision. There's that parcel A, parcel B, and then the other lands to the left there, that are 10.4 acres. Uh, because that, uh, parcel above is naturally subdivided by North Grove. So it's not part of that subdivision.
Where we went wrong, right?
It's already a separate lot. And then same with the lot below McKinley. So it's really just three, um, parcels. So.
I'm, I don't follow you.
So between North Grove and McKinley, there's three parcels in there. Those are the only parcels that were subdivided, that one parcel, into three parcels.
Just hold on for a minute, for me, please.
I'll help you, Norman. This is what I did for myself, so it might help you.
Parcel A.
No, I got that. Just where's North Grove?
Parcel B, this is North Grove. I had to find that too. This is North Grove Street.
Okay.
Right here.
Okay, all right, like, that, that's all I need to know.
And this is the other one, 10 acres.
Andy, I found those. Those are not a problem.
Why make sure we're on the same page?
Yep.
Okay, I was just having a problem locating.
No, no, you're good. So uh, the subdivision decision letter says a milar must show the size of all four parcels. A, 24.9 acres, so that's correct. B, 20.5 acres. That's correct. And then C on the letter and D are, need to be corrected. So C should say that 10.4 acres to the left. And then there should be no D at all.
So we're just talking about the, the things you want changed are in the letter, not the milar, not the survey that was done.
Yeah, the milar is fine.
Okay.
Um, so those are, that's the first change. The second is it says a milar must be filed by June 5th, 2024. So Eric, he brought a milar here to be recorded before June 5th. Uh, it didn't end up getting recorded till June 21st. But that June 5th date was only 90 days past the March 7th. And that's according to the Rutland Town Subdivision Regulations for Minor Subdivisions. That's section 185 dash 17. Uh, and, and 24 VSA, section 4463. Uh, that gives you 180 days to record the milar. So that should really be September 3rd, 2024.
It's another instance where our ordinance is out of date and doesn't meet statute. So what used to be 90 days should be now 180.
Yeah, so it was filed by June 21st, which was well before the September 3rd date it should have been.
Yep, and I think we can address that by just a motion saying the milar was, was submitted in a timely manner.
Yeah. So, um.
One motion.
Yeah, if we could do a motion to acknowledge the existence of those pre-existing parcels that aren't included in the subdivision. Uh, that the subdivision includes those three parcels that are parcel A of 24.9 acres, parcel B of 20 and a half acres, and parcel C of 10.4 acres.
Excuse me just a second.
Yeah.
On my copy of the milar, uh, of the plat, there's no identification as parcel C.
Yeah, there's no parcel C.
Yeah.
Um, so on this, on the subdivision decision letter, um, it was just identified parcel C as 19 acres, which is the, the parcel below uh, McKinley Avenue. So that also is not marked as C, but because now there's no C or D, we're gonna have to just reference that 10.4 acres as parcel C for the letter purposes.
And that is also on the north side of McKinley? All of those?
It's east.
Side, yeah. Technically, yeah, east side.
But across the street from the other parcels, across the road.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not the other new parcels, but the.
Not parcel A, parcel B.
Existing ones, right.
Yeah. And yeah, and that's it. So just to acknowledge the existence of the pre-existing parcels, to identify those three parcels with the proper acreage and then to allow recording of the milar within 180 days. So does the milar, should the milar include a reference to parcel C?
I think that would make sense. Be clearer. And clear.
I'm, I'm just asking because two of the parcels that were referenced are clearly indicated on the Mylar. The, there are other parcels, most of which are indicated as other lands. In fact, parcel C that has been referenced on the, uh, west side, on the east side of Grove Street, is not referenced as a parcel. It just indicates 10.4 acres. And apparently there was some error or misunderstanding previously with the 19 acres on the east side of McKinley, which led to the confusion so that there could be no confusion at all. It would seem to make sense that if we're going to reference a parcel C that is otherwise not indicated, that that should be shown on the Mylar so that we can actually, uh, reference visually what the three.
How is it not shown?
It is not referenced as parcel C. This is referenced as parcel B. This is referenced as parcel A. All of these other parcels are indicated as other lands. Uh, jointly owned, I guess, by Wilk and Dutil. And in my mind, I was having a little bit of difficulty in the beginning, even though we had seen this before. It was familiar to me. I was struggling to find parcel C because it wasn't indicated. So I'm sharing Norman's concern. I'm just wondering if the Mylar, if we are going to reference, uh, the subdivision by specific parcels, most of the time when we're looking at, um, at maps and plan sketches, it has those clearly identified. So my question simply is, we have an A, we have a B, we have a C, the letter can be rewritten to indicate those, um, three parcels. And then we can make a motion that the, um, the original was submitted within the, uh, appropriate timeframe with just this being corrected so that there's no ambiguity moving forward, because otherwise I don't know how we reference what parcel C is except by the amount of acreage that is, um.
We could do, we could do it that way.
Just a, just a question. I believe a lot are.
I, I share your view. I mean, it seems to me that it's not a big deal to, to change the letter as you've requested. We're happy to do that. But I think it's not a big deal to change the Mylar and make it say parcel C so it's consistent with the letter.
Right.
And I.
But he's already had it recorded and.
Right.
So it's just more cost to him.
Right, it's more cost. Yeah, Andy.
I, I'd have to agree with the fact that that Mylar should be changed. We have plenty of time to do it. Um, and, and 10 years from now, when someone's looking at that Mylar, there shouldn't be any ambiguity there whatsoever. If there was a time constraint, I would say no, but there's no time constraint now. So easily we could change the letter and the, and the Mylar to make it consistent.
I don't think it's an exceptionally high cost, is it, to, to get?
Uh, it's probably not a high cost. I'm actually more worried about um, not being able to get title work completed on the property when we're already way behind on it because of getting, you know, hitting like a snag that just kind of holds you up. So, um.
We can have, but we can have a letter out promptly.
Yeah.
I suspect the engineer can make the change in in a nanosecond. Having done a few title searches in my older days, I, I know that if I came across it in this situation, went to the map, I would be confused. At least initially. The title insurance companies might want a little clarification as well. So.
Well, I, I think if, I think if you guys could get, uh, you know, a corrected subdivision letter just with instructions that, you know, the subdivision is approved and I have, you know, give me, I don't know, a, a month or two or something to, it'd probably be in, hopefully within a week, would be my hope, um, to have it. But I just, it would be nice to be able to move forward with title work to split those properties up because I don't know if any of you have been out in that area lately, but you know, Steve and I are both, you know, substantially into builds and we need to be able to separate those lots.
So you, what substantially what?
Into construction of homes there.
Bill, you're going on vacation.
And this original letter identified the lots C and D based on acreage and D compo- combined two lots to come up with that acreage. So I don't, I don't see why we can't just say C 10.9 acres or 10.4 acres and identify it that way.
Hi, could I interject? Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is Tony Dutil. Um, I'll apologize for not having my video on. It's, it's about, uh, 10 after 1 a.m. where I am right now. Um, so my preference would be if the, the commission would simply issue a corrected, um, permit decision letter. Um, rather than record, what, I guess, at this point, I'm unclear what the procedure is that the commission will follow. Um, it seems cleaner to me if the commission were to simply issue a corrected approval letter rather, or decision letter, um, rather than record, because then you're also making a motion that the Mylar was timely recorded, but then you're also asking that a new Mylar be recorded, which triggers, uh, uh, you know, I, I think gets into a, a different triggering of appeal period issue. Um, so I think rather than, than clarify things, it has the potential to to add more confusion as, as to what happened here and how it was corrected. So the, I think the, the simple corrected uh, decision letter referencing the acreage or the parcels by their acreage, uh, would be the simplest, easiest way to correct this error.
And it'll be three parcels.
Three, yep, correct.
So I'm gonna respond a little bit to Tony's, um, request. This is now coming back to me. I didn't realize the connections prior to our meeting, or I would have done my homework like I did on the, um, uh, on the minutes, because that's what I do. But I remember there being significant confusion around which parcels we were talking about when this was filed. I believe I made the motion. You can go back and check, um, um, Bill. But I think I made a contingent, uh, motion upon the parcels being clearly identified. If that in fact did not happen, and I'm beginning to wonder whether it did because of the way we crafted the letter, which I wasn't part of, but that's okay. Um, that the confusion began with the lack of clarity on the, uh, on the map, which resulted in the letter being confusing and erroneous in identifying four parcels. Because I remember having a significant discussion about which parcels we were talking about and how the parcels were divided. So I think that there is shared responsibility on our part, as well as on the part of the, uh, map preparer. And that we can take care of our portion. But I would be remiss if I did not insist again that we have the map and the Mylar to actually reflect what the decision letter represents.
Your motion identified the exact size of each parcel, and it was contingent upon the final plat showing the four correct sizes.
I should have said clearly identified by parcel letter, but I didn't, I guess.
Wait, we said, we said parcel A will be, parcel B will.
Oh, okay. So I did say that. Right.
You, you, each parcel was, was specifically identified.
And I did make the motion?
Yes.
That's pretty good because I usually don't remember back a year plus.
I remember that we had a lot of trouble figuring out what was going on.
There was a lot of discussion.
And I think with all due respect, uh, I share Dan's, uh, view on this. Uh, nobody's pointing fingers.
Nope.
This, this is not a contested area. Uh, I rather doubt there'll be much. There was no opposition from the neighbors. There's no op, you know, so I don't think an extended appeal period is, is of concern. I just think we need to do it correctly for the future and make sure the records, there's no area of, um, left up for debate in the future or confusion, and this takes care of it. So.
We don't have an appeal period in our subdivision ordinance. We don't have an appeal period in our ordinance. Or, which is something that was revealed, going through it in last year. So. Yes, Howard.
Yes. There's obviously been a fair amount of confusion here with all of this. This is a complicated parcel of land. And to me, I, I agree with Andy. This, this is an opportunity to fix this thing so that there's no more confusion down the road. And that would mean submitting a, a corrected, uh, survey plat to reflect all of what we're talking about. And that, that would be my suggestion.
Well, the, the only change would be I just have to put lot C here.
Parcel C, right, to be consistent with the other ones. And then, uh, based on my motion from 15, whatever it was, 18 months ago, the, um, the acreage is clearly delineated. We would then remove any reference to parcel D because it's irrelevant. And we would only reference the three parcels, which addresses the question you, uh, that, that you raised. So, um, I, I, I think for me, that's the simplest and the cleanest way. And agreeing with both Howard and, uh, Andy, that allows anybody who sees this, uh, in the future, referencing the, the plat uh, and/or the correspondence approving the, uh, decision of the Planning Commission. It's, uh, transparent, it's clear, and there's no ambiguity or confusion.
Now, I would, I would just add and ask that, um, I know last time Eric, he dropped the, the Mylar off to be recorded. He dropped it off before June 5th. And it had to be come to a meeting and get approved, so it wasn't recorded until June 21st.
It was on June 5th that I, that, that, it actually wasn't me that dropped it off. It was Ray. I just wanted to be clear. Ray Page dropped it off on the 5th, but that, basically because we read this as it had to be here by the 5th.
Right.
We didn't know that.
That's what we told you.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is one, it's 180 days.
It is 180 days. And we're working on our, our end to make sure that the bylaws as they're currently written, which is what we're operating under, get corrected to actually reflect state statute.
Yeah.
So I would just ask that there's not the delay this time. If, you know, if he makes a correction, puts this lot C, it could just be recorded right away. So he doesn't have to delay things any further.
That's reasonable.
Up to you to sign it. And so if the, the, the delay was the be between the date arrived and the date of the meeting when you were here to actually sign it. That was, that was the, the, that window. So.
Don't let me do that again then.
So if the concern, if the concern is, uh, of that, uh, by some inadvertent, unintentional, unavoidable delay, a, a signature isn't procured, we will waive that for allowing that the, um, the, the Mylar to be recorded and for the, um, for the, uh, subdivision to be, uh, formalized. And if we need to do that at our next meeting, we can certainly do that.
Um, just so I'm clear, um, you guys would be able to just submit a new subdivision letter, basically now, with the stipulation that I correct this. Then once I bring this into the office and, and drop it at the clerks to record, we're all set.
It's gotta go to me to go to Barbara to be signed.
The signature.
Get recorded. It can't get recorded before it's signed.
So let me see if I, um, can paraphrase from my own understanding.
For all of our understanding.
For all of our understanding. I mean, I'm just trying to understand it myself. So, um, that Eric would come back with a corrected Mylar, which he would give, turn in to you or to somebody in the clerk's office. Uh, that would go to Barbara for review of whatever the motion is tonight, which I'm happy to make again. Uh, she would verify that. That would then generate a letter of the formal approval. And then it will be recorded. Is that, do I have that sequence right?
Do it like.
Well, is that what we follow for a procedure?
Is that the normal sequence?
But usually after the, after a, a normal subdivision meeting, you say it's approved based upon the discussion. And then, then we get the, then we get the Mylar later. So this is, this is, we had, we're in a little bit of uncharted territory. So we've never had a scenario like this.
So the letter comes right after we make the approval.
You, you, you usually say that. Yeah. So that's, that's when they say, and it has to be filed by that date. So I don't think there's any, gonna be any issue with the timely, the timeline to record it. I, I, that doesn't seem like that's gonna be a challenge at all. So it's just getting it corrected. So I mean, the, the one that's there met, met the requirement for filing. So this is just a correction. So there's no, there's nothing in our rules or anything that you, Kevin, I talked about that, that said there's a timeline for a correction. So this is, I don't think there's any issue with timeliness at this point.
So in other words, uh, Bill, the timeline requirement has already been met.
Yes.
The correction then can be submitted. And we will issue a corrected letter based on the corrected Mylar submission.
Right.
Sounds good to me.
And I mean, if, if, if you so chose, you could, if you wanted to maybe give Barbara say will allow her to sign it when it gets here, regardless of the timeline to the next meeting, that would make that process a little shorter.
So you, you would want a motion.
That's up to you guys.
Yes. Keep going.
Just, yeah. Just give me my tasks of motions. So. I just gotta write these down if, if I'm gonna be the motion person. So, uh, uh, one is to approve the subdivision. Amendment correction. What is it gonna be called? Is it a correction? Filing? Correction?
Clarification?
I think amendment, probably be.
I don't think amendment is. Nothing corrected.
Okay.
Nothing is changed.
Okay, so approve the corrected subdivision submission.
No subdivision letter.
No. No, let me, let me do my own motion. If you wanna do the motion, you do it. But it's, it's a sub, it's, um, it's a corrected subdivision Mylar. Okay. Uh, subdivision Mylar.
The three parcels.
And letter also.
Uh, hang on, let me, let me, let me go. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm working on this one, Andy. I just gotta break it down in my head. Um, okay, Mylar for the okay, for the corrected uh, Wilk Dutil. Dutil. Um, subdivision Mylar for three parcels. Parcels. Identified as A, B, and C with uh, acreage of 24.9, 20.5, and 10.4. Okay. Sequentially. Okay. Contingent upon new Mylar submission, right?
Right.
Corrected Mylar.
I already got corrected in the previous sentence, new Mylar submission. Okay. That's, that's motion one. Motion two will be to approve a corrected letter of decision issued by the Chair of the PC to reflect approval of the said parcels. The said subdivision of parcels. Three to authorize the Chair of the PC to Bill, what did you tell me? To review and sign the Mylar, is that right? Outside of a whenever it's submitted, it doesn't have to wait for a PC meeting. Upon submission, authorize the Chair of the PC to sign Mylar.
The amended Mylar.
Corrected.
Corrected.
Corrected Mylar.
And issue decision letter without holding another PC meeting.
Another what?
Another planning commission meeting.
Planning commission meeting.
I'm putting PC, but you can put planning commission. That's okay.
You're gonna say this whole thing so later I can make sense of it, right?
I, I, I've written half a page, Bill. I'm gonna try to read it verbatim. I mean, I'm sitting here with two lawyers in the room, and I'm doing this. I'm outside of my field.
We're enjoying your discomfort at every turn.
Yeah, thanks.
Now you have an idea what we, what we go through.
Three lawyers.
Three? Oh, sorry. Four, five, yeah. I'm way out of my league.
Andy, go ahead.
Quick question. On the, at the end of the letter, should we put something in that says the applicants can proceed along as if, in other words, reference something that they've been approved so that we're not holding their project up? Is that possible to put? They referenced, one of the gentlemen referenced something about them not that they're well into construction and that yet they don't want to be, you know, proceeding along illegally, apparently. Is that, was that the point? If I can ask you that?
Well, I think I can speak to that, and I think the issue, sort of answer your question, no, I don't think, although that that would be very helpful and appreciated. I don't think with the requirement of a new Mylar filing, we're going to have to wait until that gets filed so that it can then be referenced in the deeds to then separate these parcels and title them appropriately. So unfortunately, because of the requirement of a new Mylar or corrected Mylar being filed, we can't really proceed until that new Mylar is recorded.
This is a corrected permit. This isn't a substantive change. This could, I mean, this could happen down the line after the property subdivided and sold twice, somebody finally picks it up and asks for the change. It's not gonna hurt anything, so. This isn't provoking a premise, it's just clarifying language.
So what are you saying, Norm?
Saying I, if it, I'm not, I can't give legal advice, I no longer have a license, I don't see the hangup that she's discussing that she's mentioning.
She's just saying, I think what Tony is mentioning is that we have a series of steps and it doesn't matter what we, what we say in the letter because they have to go through the steps. I think that's all she was pointing out, that that doesn't make any sense to include something in the letter that require, that.
Would jumpstart or.
So the deed would have to reference the Mylar.
Yeah, right.
And since, since tonight, the decision is that a corrected Mylar needs to be filed, that corrected Mylar needs to be recorded in order to be able to be referenced in a subsequent deed that separates these parcels.
In order to get the deed, I think, I think you're absolutely right, Tony. In order to get the deed corrected and referenced properly, the Mylar just needs to be filed, so.
So unfortunately, yeah, so while it would be really helpful and appreciated to have some sort of language that says we can move forward, unfortunately, because of the legal process we have to follow and the requirement that a corrected Mylar be filed, now we have to wait for that corrected Mylar to be filed.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I think your, your motion is intact there.
Well, I have three motions.
One more thing to add, just that the initial filing of the Mylar was timely, just.
Yeah, I'm not, yes, that'd be fine.
But does that have to be in my motion?
It should, it should be a motion, whether it's included in yours or we do it separately.
Okay, usually a motion is for action. But the fact that something was done in a timely manner does not require a motion to validate it.
In this case, Kevin had said it would be appropriate just for clarification.
Just for clarification.
Have it on the record.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I can make a motion into a clarification, and we want that in the corrected letter of decision?
He just said it need to be.
It can be in the minutes.
Doesn't need to be.
Just in the minutes.
It can be in the minutes.
Okay, so let the, let the minutes of July 31st reflect that the planning commission unanimously agrees, unless I'm wrong, that the original submission of the Mylar was within the approved timeframe. Okay, you can just put that in the minutes.
Thank you.
Sufficiency?
Dude.
My pleasure. Okay, so now I have to get to the motions, right? Okay. I'm gonna do them one at a time. If you have a question, please ask at the time that I make the motion because I'm gonna ask for approval of each motion individually. So I make a motion to approve the corrected Wilk Dutil subdivision Mylar for three parcels identified as A, B, and C with acreage of twenty-four point nine, twenty point five, and ten point four respectively.
Dana, I hate to overly picky.
Contingent upon.
Oh, I'm sorry, you hadn't finished, excuse me.
Contingent upon a new Mylar submission.
Okay, then it's motion, is there a second?
I just, I think it ought to say.
Can we have a second so that we can actually have a discussion, please?
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Thanks, Andy.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, I agree with the motion. I think it just would be clearer, Dana, if it said to reflect. So the Mylar would reflect.
So my motion says to approve the corrected Wilk Dutil subdivision Mylar. Where do you want reflect put in there, Norman, because that?
Continue to read it.
For three parcels identified as A, B.
Reflect three parcels or to show three parcels.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you.
I will correct my motion.
Thank you.
Andy, you okay with the correction?
Yes, I am.
To reflect three parcels identified as A, B, and C. You are, Andy?
Yes, I am.
Right.
Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed, so that's unanimous. Okay, motion number two.
Motion number two is to approve a corrected letter of decision issued by the Chair of the Planning Commission to reflect approval of said subdivision of parcels. Period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Andy. Could you read it one more time?
I make a motion to approve a corrected letter of decision issued by the Chair of the Planning Commission to reflect the approval of the said subdivision of parcels.
I think that's okay.
Said subdivision.
Of the previous motion.
Of the previous motion, okay.
Okay, I will change the said subdivision to the previous motion.
Andy, you okay with that?
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Of subdivision of parcels.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Number three.
I make a motion to authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign the corrected Mylar and issue the decision letter without holding another planning commission.
Without necessarily, yeah, okay.
Necessarily holding another planning commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Those would be tabled.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous as well. Okay. Have we addressed everything?
Think so, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for your time. We appreciate particularly that last motion to expedite the signing and recording of the corrected Mylar.
Thank you very much, Norman.
A pleasure.
You want this back?
Thank you.
Eric, do you want any of these back?
I don't need them back. You guys wanna file them away with the reported stuff on the meeting or whatever you'd like to do with them.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, so I got a bunch of copies saved.
Have a great rest of the year.
You too, thank you all.
Take care. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Take it home and frame it.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
Think I'll take it home and frame it.
Okay. Yeah.
I have to head out now, sorry. Seven thirty.
Okay, thanks for, yep. Thanks for joining in.
Oh, sure.
We had you fill the, oh, no, 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 Mary Beth, Mary Beth, Mary Beth, don't sign off right now. We're gonna go out of order. I'm gonna ask that we go out of order on the, on the agenda because we have an action for which we need you. So if we can just jump there, then we should be good to go because I don't really feel like going another meeting without a quorum to be able to approve the minutes of May 29th. And I'm not the chair, but this is driving me crazy.
Yeah, open to all kinds of hair. On that, so, so May 29th of 2025, the minutes for that meeting.
The minutes for the meeting of May 29th were erroneously noted as the meeting of May 8th. They were submitted at the same time. Bill made the correction at the meeting on on June 19th, I believe. And we did not have a quorum for those present on May 29th. So those who were present on May 29th included Barbara, Howard, Sherman, Jerry, Mary Beth, and Norm. We need four people present to be able to approve the minutes from May 29th. The people who are present that would make that quorum this evening are Barbara, Howard, Mary Beth, and Norm.
Right.
So now, go ahead, take it away, Barbara, for the minutes of May 29th.
Well, I think we have looked at these several times. And I would entertain a motion to approve these, this set of minutes, May 29th, 2025.
I have something that says May 8th. And that is now supposed to be May 29th.
Yeah, that was, that was corrected a while ago.
It was corrected at the June 19th meeting.
If I do not see Mary Beth on here.
Oh, that's because Mary Beth was not at the May 8th meeting. She was at the May 29th meeting because I was not there at the May 29th meeting. And I have the minutes for May 29th here, Norman, and you can take a look at it. These are the minutes for May 29th. It said May 8th, but it said May 29th up the top. If it says up the top, May 8th, then that's not the right set of minutes for the 29th.
I didn't get the right.
So there you go. So the minutes for the, for May 29th meeting should be a different set.
I don't have them. This is what we're sent.
No, no, hang on a second. If you're looking at the minutes that was sent by Bill this week, that was an error because Barbara had put on May 8th, so he sent the real minutes from May 8th. The May 29th meetings, you'll have to go back to the May 19th meeting, and you will have those minutes. If you have those with you.
I don't have them.
Then let me make a copy, or you can read this.
Just let him read it, yeah.
Yep.
Again, we've, we have had several opportunities to look these over.
The only problem was the, the, the compilation of people present at the pre, at the subsequent meetings did not provide us with a quorum. So we needed four of the people to be present to be able to approve these minutes. I, I am, but I think we should take those up. No, oh, I'm, who, ah, I didn't even look at that. The eighth was correct.
We do have copies of those.
Yeah, I, I don't, I did not do that check, Barbara, to see who should be present.
It can be easily done here.
July 10th.
Okay, we're good for June 19th. And we're not.
June 19th, June 19th, we, um, June 19th, Barbara, Dana, Andy, and Norm, so we're good.
We're not good for July 10th.
And July 10th are gonna have to be, right. They're gonna have to be postponed because we don't have a quorum of the people in the room.
Okay, is there a motion for the May 29th? Once again.
I move to accept the May 29th minute.
So you can leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Almost there, Mary Beth. Is there a second for May 29th?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Um, do we need Mary Beth?
No.
Or?
We cannot approve the July tenth because we do not have an, a, a quorum of members present at that meeting currently present.
But we, we.
And we do not need Mary Beth.
For the nineteenth of June.
For the nineteenth of, uh, of June. And because we have uh, the folks who are present uh, currently, uh, that's you, Barbara, me, um,
And me.
Uh, Andy and Norm. So we can approve the minutes of the nineteenth with the rest of us in the room.
Not gonna do it now, are we?
Yes, we're gonna do it now.
Okay.
So the motion on the table is for the twenty ninth, did we hear a, a vote of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you did, okay.
That one passed, it's, we're, June nineteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, it was unanimous.
All good with me?
Yeah, we're good with you, Mary Beth.
See you guys next time, bye.
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 Run what we can. June nineteenth, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Is there a second?
I'll second it just for the sake of discussion, I wasn't present, but I can make a motion to.
I'll second it if that makes, makes sense.
Okay Norman, there you go.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes to June nineteen, say aye.
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 I abstained.
Thank you Howard. Any nays?
Wait, wait a second. Hang on, hang on a second. Uh, where am I?
I think that was unanimous.
July, July. No, what do we, we're on June nineteenth, oh, that's me, I, yeah, I was at that one, sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
So that approves unanimous.
Yeah, one abstention.
He wasn't present, yeah, but.
Okay. Can we put the air on for just a second, we're, is the remote around?
Uh.
Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move back up in the agenda to the subdivision bylaw.
And we're tabling the July tenth meeting until just, uh, next move.
Right. Um.
Because it's not a quorum.
I don't think we've been making motions.
Okay, doesn't matter.
Okay, um. So, we talked about this a little bit the last meeting, uh, many of you were not in attendance, um, and doing things probably much more fun. Uh. But we'd been asked by the Select Board to come up with subdivision uh, subdivision bylaw that would replace what we have now for a very outdated ordinance. Um. Some of you heard last time, um, I reported out that, that Kevin Brown did speak to, to the Select Board and uh, that was his recommendation. There was not much discussion about zoning at all during that meeting, um, as opposed to when he met with us. Uh, but that, that was the decision coming out of Select Board that night. And um, we've sent out to you, um, the statute for the subdivision bylaws and the statute for zoning, just for comparison. And Norm also um, redid, edited his list a little bit about the comments that Kevin made in that letter. How long ago was that? Year and a half?
It was three, year and a half ago, yeah. It was September of twenty four, I believe.
Yeah, about which types of things are
Not quite.
um, outdated. So, um. So this is for, for reference, the subdivision does have some teeth. You know, nowhere near as much as, as a zoning bylaw. Um, but there are, um, as you can see in the subdivision bylaws statute, there are four things that shall be contained in that bylaw. A, B, and C, D there. And then there's some other things that may be included, there's what? Five more things that may be included there. So perhaps, um, the best first step is to take one of the more recent uh, bylaws that have been risen, been written, and that would be most likely Kevin's Bristol one that he shared with us. And to, um, you know.
Town that he, he lives in.
Yes, and he, yeah, I think he's on the Planning Commission there, or the town attorney, but yes. So if, if you look at that, um, there, it, it, it's nice because there's not a whole lot of overlap between zoning and subdivision. It's a, there's a pretty distinct, um, delineation there.
Although Barbara, I, I would say that in reviewing that, that's what Bill and uh, Norman and I did, the number of references within the subdivision bylaws are, are, it's a subsection within, and it wasn't as, as um, easy to, to port over because the references in there are to the unified, um, uh, bylaws. And so there are gaps, when you're referencing the uh, subdivision bylaws, it only talks about certain things and references within the subdivision bylaws, things that are referenced only in the zoning bylaws. So that is going to make it somewhat difficult for us to just take that document and copy it, because it talks about certain uh, aspects of uh, planning that are sometimes in zoning and sometimes in the bylaws. We thought in a meeting with Kevin that we were going to be able to take those and kind of merge them and work on one independently. That was not the case in terms of what I saw, and I think Norman said the same thing. Uh, Bill, I don't remember what your perspective on that was, but there, there were enough references in the bylaws, in the subdivision bylaws to uh, the zoning portion of the unified, um, what was it called, unified? Uh. Drawing a blank on the name, uh, they were unifieds or, uh, regulations, the uni, unified regulations, is that what, unified bylaws?
Unified bylaws is usually what it's called.
Uh, there were enough references.
Unified development regulations.
Yes, right, unified development, I knew there's another word, unified development regulations, because we have, he gave us that whole, that whole pack. So although the uh, the bylaws within that unified development regulations uh, doc, uh, document is the shorter component, it leaves gaps in terms of being able to implement certain aspects of the subdivision regulations. That's all I'm gonna say.
I don't know if I followed that.
Okay, let me see if I can be any clearer.
Didn't bring it, so.
I think, I mean, there's a lot of instances where it talks about zoning administrator and development review board.
Yep, within the um, subdivision regulations, yes.
Right.
That's true. And there are some references as well Barbara, let me see if I can find mine, oh, I have that in a separate, that's over here.
Can, may I be heard?
Yeah, of course.
So. Uh, Mary Ashcroft again from the Select Board. I what the Select Board would really like the Planning Commission to do is to obviously come up with a new subdivision ordinance because the one we were using as we saw tonight has um, problems with it. We don't particularly care which towns you look at for a template. I mean, it sounds like Kevin brought in the Bristol one, that's, we, we want one that's fairly recent and up to date. Um, Kevin, I asked if he would provide to Barbara maybe three to five towns that had fairly recent. If it's a combined subdivision zoning ordinance, fine, there aren't many with standalone subdivision ordinances anymore, so you're going to run into this cross thing of of, you know, DRB and administrative officer being called a zoning administrator instead of administrative officer. We don't think that's insurmountable, just fix it, but please don't. But you're not gonna find the perfect subdivision ordinance, it isn't probably out there. We're just, we want you to move on this, and please don't get hung up on, you know, trying to find the perfect model because it's probably not gonna be. We still think by looking at a recently adopted, um, whatever it's called, which includes a subdivision component, you're still gonna be way further ahead than the snarl you hit when you tried to update the existing subdivision ordinance, it's just better to go with a new model, a new template, and tweak it than to try and rewrite what you've got. I mean, I think.
We already basically decided Mary, that we can't rewrite what we have.
Exactly, and that's what we heard as well, but please don't get hung up on, you know, there, there's gonna be difficulty whichever model you pick up. Just, if you're, you're always gonna have to do some takeout language that refers to zoning.
Right.
You're always gonna have to do that, so please don't get hung up on it. And after tonight's hearing and knowing the lawyers involved, um, outside our organizations, um, we're gonna hit this wall sooner rather than later because subdivisions are occurring again in town, and we have an ordinance that has flaws in it. And if we don't do something soon and um, have a new ordinance that goes through the process of adoption, we're gonna be in a court case that, with an ordinance that could be difficult to defend, so.
Just, just for the record, we're coming up with a bylaw, and we're gonna be following the subdivision bylaw statutes.
Because it has more oomph.
It has more oomph, it has, uh, there's a more strict approval process. And then there was something about the, the penalties that Kevin mentioned.
It's, it, the enforcement, I, I think the enforcement ability is broader if you have a bylaw, so yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyway, that's all I wanted to say, we're encouraging you to move along on this. Um, we're getting a little nervous, I'm getting a little nervous, especially after, you know, what we ran in tonight with some of the snarls in our existing ordinance, so.
And Kevin has also informed, um, us that we need to work on our appeal process.
Oh, you've got to put it in there, I mean, the statutory appeal process, it's in state statutes, so it should be reflected in the ordinance, and it must go in every uh, letter of determination, so, yeah, you can't.
E, even motions, he suggested.
Yeah, that would be fine, so go with him, he knows, he, he's researched it enough, but I just wanted to add the concern of the Select Board and hope that this is something, and I know we've asked you to do a lot, and we're really grateful, thank you very much. But um, please let this move along as expeditiously as you can.
Mary, um, if I may.
Yeah.
Thanks. First of all, the summary I prepared is to highlight, I suppose, those areas which we will give, be giving up control over.
Mm-hmm.
And we will not have it in the future. And I thought both the Planning Commission and the Select Board should be well aware of, of the absence of future control over these specific issues. I'll be part of the ordinance.
Did you get a copy of that, Mary?
Uh, Norman just handed it to me.
Um, that's the first thing. The second thing is Dana and I have been dealing, beating our head in, against the wall for quite some time. And I'm just wondering if it would make sense to have somebody make the investment and have somebody, Kevin drafted for us. Because it's gonna go around in circles, we meet once, if, you know, if Dana and I are appointed again, then maybe we shouldn't be, um, you know, it's a very protracted process to try and do this.
I know, I've done it in my past life. I've, I've done zoning ordinances, I've done subdivision, I've done updates to town plans, I know it's a long process.
Can't be done quickly, if you're
No.
One or two or three months, I don't think so.
Well, I didn't put a timeline on it, but I did express that we're concerned about our existing ordinance not being as enforceable as we would wish.
So Mary, may I just ask a, a question, because I, I believe I'm not speaking out of turn, if I said that we had a substantive discussion on June nineteenth about the status of our subdivision, um, uh, ordinance. And that there was unanimous, um, uh, assent that we believe that the appropriate pathway forward for making sure that the uh, Planning Commission can do its work uh, in terms of uh, subdivision responsibilities is to include the subdivision regulations within a unified development set of regulations, which includes zoning.
I understand.
And uh, if that's been communicated, then that, that's fine, but the work that is being asked.
The votes for anything relating to zoning, I don't know how else to say it. I don't have the votes on the Select Board. So what the Select Board was willing to do is say, please work on a subdivision ordinance.
Bylaw.
Thank you, I keep doing that, but the stronger, more robust bylaw.
Andy, or Howard, do you? Okay. Okay. Yep, good. Yes, the, the, the message was sent and received, and this is the response.
Well, you, you, as I understand it, yeah, and historically, I know this to be the case, uh, that you don't have the votes, but is the Select Board aware of the unanimous position of the Planning Commission that Dana set forth?
I believe Barbara conveyed that.
Did you?
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I'll, I'll go back to make the same statement that um, that I made when we were having our conversation, if I remember correctly, on June nineteenth. And that was that if the, um, uh, not if, uh, that uh, everybody, I think, needed more education about the actual function and purpose of unified, um, development regulations. And that, uh, if we were to move forward, the Planning Commission would need representation from the Select Board to write these, um, subdivision, um, bylaws. Because not having, um, substantive input directly from the Select Board would make the task nearly impossible. So that would be my request from uh, this, this group to the Select Board. Because otherwise, we are going to be here one year from now with no further progress on subdivision regulations based on the amount of time that three people in this room have spent over the last fifteen to eighteen months working on a variety of topics, not least of which was reviewing all of Kevin's recommendations. So, that's, that's what I think really needs to happen if, in order for um, subdivision bylaws to be crafted and be approved by whichever number of the Select Board members would be needed to approve them.
I don't think that's going to be an issue.
The subdivision, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two different things here, I'm hearing Dana speak to a unified ordinance which would contain zoning and subdivision, and my message from the Select Board is no, work on a subdivision ordinance, not a unified ordinance, because they don't want to tackle zoning.
And, and my, my point would be, it's not, my point is not making it the case for And, and my, my point would be, it's not, my point is not making it the case for unified development bylaws. It's that the select board members need to know what is in a subdivision, a set of bylaws by itself. And what is required in order to effectively implement those. That, that's, and that would be my request, because we hear a lot of, we receive a lot of tasks from the select board and we have not balked at any of those tasks. And I'm sure that Barbara would say we won't balk at this one. I'm just making the point that if the select board, if there isn't some select board representation other than you, Mary, present for joint work sessions on what our bylaws are, it is not going to be clear to them how they interact with the overall application of town planning, the, the land use map and other things.
Well, Kevin, Kevin did run through the components that would go into a subdivision ordinance. If you-
Took the bylaw, yes.
That's right.
I'm, I'm simply saying-
I can make the offer to them that they send, you know, that they appoint someone to work with the planning commission on this. But you could very well get me.
I, I don't think that that would be helpful.
I know. And that's what, because I'm already someone who understands zoning, someone who understands subdivision regs. And you're trying to, I heard the word educate the select board.
Well, educate anybody, everybody, like educate the town, I mean, because-
Well, you have to do that anyway as part of the bylaw approval process, because you have to have public hearings and walk through what you're proposing.
But, but my point is that in order to do this effectively, in order for us as a, as a joint organization, select board and planning commission, working in tandem, that in order for our education to reach the greatest number of people in the community, it can't be done in isolation. And one of the lessons that I've learned in terms of the amount of time that we've put in to participate over the last, whatever it was, 18 months, the, the missing piece was we, we didn't have anybody from the select board walking through the process. People can know and hear a presentation. We got a letter from Kevin Brown 18 months ago that, that said, here, 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 this, this, this and that. And we went through line by line and actually tried to apply that.
I knew this, and I thank you for your work, and I know it's been a very long process. But I know the conclusion was, you need to look at somebody else's bylaw and pick up a newer version and run with that as a template. Now, I can't, I mean, let me go to the point. You think it's critical to have a select board member. It sounds to me like you want one of the people who might, I don't know who, who you're looking for. You don't want me because I, I'm probably already committed to the process.
Well, no, I, I think that, well, one, you're the chair. Two, you have a, a fairly good understanding of what, what we're doing.
Yeah, you can't force education on any group of people.
No, 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 and that's not like-
And I would point out that the select board is, this is a very small part of what we do. We have so much stuff and we have committees that are outdoing everything from, we just signed a contract for a major sewer project on the south end of town and it's all, the board is already overworked. And to say the planning commission insists that before they go forward with a subdivision ordinance, one of you, not me, needs to be a delegate that will work with them on regular meetings to come up with it. I don't think that's going to be a welcome whatever.
What I was going to suggest Dana and everyone else is that I will work with, with Kevin. I'll take the, the template from Bill that we, that you have one that would, you would prefer to use for a new bylaw, right?
No, 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 we don't.
No, I just mean the temp, you know, the structure.
We have Bristol's.
Yeah.
We don't, we did not create anything from that.
But you, you probably wanted to match like our, our ordinances.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so that's what I mean by the template. The cover page, the table of contents, where it goes, where the definitions go.
Get that far now. We, we had, we had talked about that as a concept, but it never actually made it into reality.
Yeah, so I'm willing to work with Kevin, starting with Bristol and hopefully with some other towns that he finds.
Um, he mentioned Wallingford too, so you might want to take a look at.
Wallingford. For unified, okay.
The point he made too is these are all available. Most towns now have their bylaws available on their websites. So if you think of towns like us with some commercial, maybe a little industrial, you know, smallish population, but with a lot more going on. And then you look and see towns maybe closer or in size and in demographics like that. And see if they have a fairly recent subdivision component, whether it's a standalone bylaw or whether it's part of a development review, then it's, that will give you some guidance. I did ask Kevin to, because he had already taken a look up and down Route 7. He also mentioned Ferrisburg, which has similar, you know, similar things. So you find a recent bylaw. And then something that would fit what our demographics, not just population, but the, you know, commercial, industrial component as well.
I think, I think we're going to need outside counsel. Almost, this is a huge undertaking.
Yes, it is.
Bristol, I read that whole eighty-some pages of subdivision regulations and pardon me, zoning. You know, and the complexity of Rutland Town. And it just, it, I think it's beyond really the expertise of, of the board. And maybe, I don't know if there's any groups that-
The regional planning commission used to offer ordinance drafting services, I don't know whether you still do. Okay.
Devin and I talked about it a little bit.
Okay.
He said like, if, if we're interested, we can go talk to them, so.
Okay, I mean, that might be, because if you hire a lawyer, Norman, you know what the hourly rates are going to be. We would totally blow through any budget we had. But if the service is still offered by the regional planning commission, that's what I would recommend you do. They have, they're aware of all of the towns, all of the ordinances out there, bylaws, sorry.
Yeah, mostly in the region, but-
In the region, but if, I mean, frankly, if people feel that we're taking pieces from a couple of ordinances bylaws here in Rutland County, I think people are going to be more accepting because it's what our neighbors are doing.
So Mary, we've already been down that road. Bill did the research. We reached out to Vermont League of Cities and Towns. And the, the only set, Mount Holly, the only set that we received in terms of recent, 2011?
Oh, no, no, it was like eighty, no, it was-
No, it was, it was after ours.
Oh, yeah, it was like, it was like eighty-seven, I think it was, it was-
Okay, this was, as I understand it, a standalone ordinance. And that's where some of the issue is, because not many towns-
Have standalone.
Have standalone ordinances.
Bill said there were, somebody said that we're only five in the state.
It's possible.
I think it's seven, and we're one of them.
Yeah.
So there might be only five others. I think it was seven. Somebody said the number, I remember seven. And that they're, that have standalone subdivision ordinances. And we found that Mount Holly's was the newest in Rutland County. And I guess my recollection is off on that, but. So the other, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, I think, I think Devin would probably want a contract with the town.
And, and we would want to know what the budget is. And then, but I still think tapping the resources of the regional commission rather than hiring counsel to do it makes more sense on a lot of different levels.
Yeah.
Certainly, it's a sensible first step.
Yeah.
I just know the time we've put in so far and how much it was and how little progress we really made. And that's not being critical of Bill or Dana or even of myself. It's an uphill climb.
It's, it's not fixing. I've done it myself in other places. I understand.
And it's not fixing what's there in ordinance right now. It's just ditching that and starting from scratch.
We know that, Barbara. If anybody knows this, Bill, Norman and I know this. Because we were saying this, this was before we asked Kevin to come and talk to us. We knew that you couldn't use, it was impossible to take what was existing, because there were so many errors. And there were so many references, the things that were no longer applicable in terms of statute, that that made no sense. So we, we dismissed that and we've mentioned that to the planning commission.
Right, but even if there were just five that have done it recently, that's going to make the job so much easier. Because it's, it's not going to take as long as what you were doing.
No, I, I think that's true, yeah.
Nothing would.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, I would be fine with recommending if you folks talk with the regional commission and get a contract from them to assist with drafting a new subdivision ordinance, then you're tapping the resources you need. And in the past, when we've, we've done that, and I'm thinking way back to when I was on this plan, planning commission. We came up with an ordinance and then we asked permission to hire an attorney to review what we had done. And maybe at that point, you bring in Kevin or you bring in, you know, someone from his firm who's used to doing it. But for the actual, you know, give us a template and let's start working on the template. And I don't know how to address Dana's concern of send a select board member in to work with us. And it can't be me, I got that. And I'm not insulted by that, I understand your reasoning.
And I, I just don't think it's that necessary, Dana. I, I think, I think the board was totally-
Let it drop, let it, let it drop. I've said it, I've said it already in this context with the planning commission. I've said it now to Mary, I don't need to say it again, we can drop it and move on. I'm, I'm past that.
I'm also aware that this planning commission and different iterations of members, and not all, I mean, some of you folks have been through this, have come up with ordinances in the past twice with zoning ordinances. And the select board either didn't act or denied them. And this is different select board. But I don't know. And it, it hurts me because I know how much work goes into it. And I obviously was, if I had been on those boards at the time, would have advocated for adoption, but I wasn't. And I don't feel from the comments around the table when we presented the idea of a combined ordinance, I don't think we have the votes to move forward with it. So I'm trying to avoid that kind of conflict and just move forward with the subdivision piece, because that is kind of what we need. But let's see if we can get the regional commission in to help.
Yeah.
Mary, what, what I, what concerns me is that there is going to be a push from Montpelier and maybe a push from within for very different kinds of housing in Rutland Town than we have historically. And somehow in my mind, it begs for more regulation than we're going to be able to produce in a subdivision. And just, so to some extent, and I know, you know, from my long years of, of living in town, that there's always been, let's say, a super allergy to zoning ordinances. But I'm, I think the current and the potential in the next five or 10 years, significantly different development in town needs to be anticipated.
Okay.
I've seen some of the, oh, work and the, the regional planning commission has done and some of the ideas they floated about different kinds of housing. And it's very different from what, you're absolutely right, it's very different from what we've seen in town. So, yes.
Yeah, the person at the, at the regional commission who does bylaws and housing is the same person. Logan.
Oh, Logan, okay.
Yeah, and he's, he's really, he's really immersed himself in both topics and come a long way from a couple of years ago when we first talked to him. So he might be able to help us with that, Norm. Just. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, maybe not okay, but that's where we are. Tell us what we can help you with to get the regional commission to assist. And I think that's a resource we should tap.
And the next year's budget, we can, we can put in more for, for Kevin, you know, for legal advice in anticipation that this will take some time, just for view.
Mary, do we need specific authority from the select board to approach the regional planning commission?
No.
Or first, do we need a proposal from the re-
Well, you go ahead and talk with the commission, but ultimately, they're going to present a contract and the select board's going to have to authorize it, so, yeah.
But we don't need authorization to go and talk.
No, you don't, just go talk with them, see what they've got to offer.
Then we make a motion that we would like this contract to be entered into between the planning commi-, our planning commission and the regional planning commission.
You can, or you can send Barbara in with the recommendation. And then the, and then make sure we have a copy of what you're looking for and how much it is and-
That's the normal process for any allocation of funds.
Yeah, we, we were also given the briefing by our town clerk and treasurer on how to sharpen up our process for invoices. So yes, we do need to have something in writing.
I think I was present when they, when Carrie mentioned that.
Was it last meeting?
Because, no.
Okay.
This was, this was a couple of meetings.
All right, all right.
Okay.
All right.
Some meeting I attended that was on-
Thank you all. I don't say that enough, we don't say that enough. But we do appreciate what you do. And we'll grumble and we'll complain and you're welcome to do the same to us. But that doesn't lessen our appreciation for your good work, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
You're welcome, Mary.
Okay. Any announcements? We do have a townwide celebration on the 23rd.
Yep. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of August.
Ten to two.
Anyone available?
What time?
Ten to two. Uh, so those who are too shy to offer their help right now, just let me know and we'll, we'll fit you in. And we'll, we'll probably have a couple of things that we'll be featuring there, the Pocket Park. And hopefully the MS4 work and the Moonbrook watershed.
Right now, Barbara, Fran and I are both planning to be in attendance, so I can probably do something at some point.
Excellent.
And I don't think we're doing anything with Brock this year, right?
They didn't respond to my email to join.
So you-
Last year I carried the ball.
Yeah.
They, they dropped it, but I, I was away, I wasn't sure, nobody ever said anything to me, nobody asked, so that's why.
The option is still there, they would like it, but.
I've got it.
That's just, I'm, I'm going to say, I mean, as much as I think that Brock should be present, I know what my August is like and I'm already doing two, two presentations up in Brandon. I, I think I'd like the day off from doing a coordinated project between Brock and the town.
You have a few different organizations coming, but yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear back from, from them.
Next time, just CC me, would you, Bill?
One of the things we wanted-
At least that way I can follow up with them.
All of the organizations which receive special appropriations on the ballot every year, the standalone- organizations which receive special appropriations on the ballot every year, the standalone votes, we, we wanted to invite them and make sure the townspeople see what they are offering to the communities, because when town meeting comes up again, that'll be fresh in their minds, we hope.
Excellent idea.
Good. Is the regional planning commission on that list?
They are on that list, and I did not hear back from them either.
Okay.
All right, Bill. If you send, whoever you sent it to, did you send it to Vicki Loomis?
I don't, I don't, I'd have to go back and look.
Are they a separate appropriation? Or are they?
Oh, yeah.
Brock is separate, but the regional planning commission's in our budget.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So if, if you.
Never gets the appropriation based upon population, but they are coming.
Okay, good.
So if you want to said, oh, I haven't heard from you, and you want to CC me, at least I can go and ask them if they want, huh?
For my last email.
For my last email, yeah. And I can ask. I mean, it, it just, it makes sense, but I can't. I'm stretched too thin to be thinking for everybody.
Okay, any other announcements? There a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.